It's 5:30. We'll call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council, November 3rd, to order. I'd like to inform the public about the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chambers and accessible to members of the public. We will stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Grandquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Mayor.
The first item, we have number five, is a public comment, period. We're gonna move that to the end of the meeting because we have some special guests here from our Citizens Academy 101, and we wanna present them their certificates and that prior to. So at that, that will follow item 27. Number six, a look for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item number 10.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Your Honor, I'll abstain. We can set an agenda.
Okay, I'll ask for a vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Grandquist, Arnz, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Hildebrand, Beckman, abstaining, McCarthy, motion carries.
Next, we'll ask for a motion for approval of the full agenda. So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, prior to getting to item 10 on the regular agenda, we do have a couple of special presentations. First one we have is a proclamation for read aloud to a child month. Proclamation, read aloud to a child month, whereas literacy is the fundamental building block of all learning and is essential to the growth and success of every child in our city, and whereas reading to children enlarges their vocabulary and enhances their listening skills, thereby fostering intellectual growth and a more positive attitude towards reading, and whereas reading to a child is a simple and priceless act that benefits both adult and child, positively contributing to family literacy and strengthening the bond between a parent and child, and whereas when parents assume the responsibility for children's literacy, making a commitment to reading for 20 minutes a day, children become more healthy, resilient, and inquisitive, and whereas Read Aloud Norfolk, the Norfolk Public Library, Norfolk Area Schools, and other organizations representing parents, teachers, librarians, and concerned citizens advocate for reading aloud to children because it fosters healthy interaction between adults and children, and whereas reading aloud to children will enhance family literacy and the well-being of younger people throughout Now therefore be it resolved that I Frank Arnz, council president of Norfolk, Nebraska, hereby proclaim November 25th as Read Aloud to a Child Month in the city of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and encourage all parents, teachers, librarians, and other caring adults to read aloud to a child every day. Is there anyone here to accept this proclamation? Okay, seeing none, we will present this a different day. And now I will ask Nick to come up on board for the recognition of the 2025 Norfolk 101 Citizens Academy class.
Yes, good evening Norfolk City Council. Tonight, we're recognizing the 2025 Norfolk 101 Citizens Academy class. So for those who may not know what this class is all about, it's an eight-week course where citizens get to see behind the scenes of different city divisions. So we started this in towards the end of September, and we finished up last week, and we had 16 citizens that took part, and it's a big commitment to do this. Not only eight weeks, three hours each week as well. So six to nine every Wednesday, they showed up and they learned everything from Norfolk Police Division, saw the city jail, to Water Division, the water pollution control plants, learn what happened when you throw away your trash. So I won't speak too much for them, but I know they learned a lot. I shared earlier with Councilman Arnz that there was some disappointment that we didn't see the taser in action at the Norfolk Police Station, but maybe we can do an after-hours tour at some point. But no, they really were a great group, very engaged, and I think the best part about this class that I always say is it's not just the divisions you get to see, you get to meet the people behind each division. And I think the city of Norfolk, one of our best assets is its people. So for them to be able to experience that, it's great, and I'm thankful that they took part and they stuck it through for eight weeks. I know there are some treats each week, so that kept it coming back, but yeah, big commitment. I'm glad that they all made it through. If I could please ask Council President Frank Arnz to come down and help present some certificates to the outstanding graduates. They did have homework throughout this as well. So they did not earn this just by a handout. They really had to work for it. So go ahead and hand these to you.
All in alphabetical order.
I'm correct.
All right, we're gonna first start off with asking Zach Benke to come up.
Thank you.
Say that okay?
Thank you, sir.
Say that okay?
Angela Wortman.
We'll do a big picture. Let's get you guys to act like you spent eight weeks together in the trenches. Do a little closer here. All right. Cole and Julie.
Say, show your certificates.
All right, ready? There you go. All right, ready? Three, two, one. Perfect.
I would just like to follow that up with, I too was a graduate of the Citizens Academy, and I think I can, I spoke with them a little bit before this meeting, and the same theme seems to run through quite often, that they're usually glad they did it when they were done, and they enjoyed the process, they learned a lot, and multiple times I had heard that they thought that the employees of whatever division they went to were happy with their jobs, were, and they were really energetic and trying to explain what they do on a daily basis. And so it was good to hear that the group enjoyed their visit, but it was also really nice to hear the feedback that the employees that were there enjoyed them as much to, you know, giving out accolades on how they enjoy their job. So I want to thank everybody involved, all the departments, and appreciate and thank these citizens for taking time out of their schedule to get to know the city a little bit better. And now we will be on item number 10. I ask for a motion on item 10, in compliance with 84-713 of the revised statutes of Nebraska, public disclosure is hereby made of a release of liability by Bryce Preister and an addendum to release of liability by Bryce Preister in the city of Norfolk whereby Bryce Preister, for and in consideration of the payment of the total sum of $550,000, releases and for discharges the city of Norfolk and its insurer for any and all claims related to a personal injury suffered by Bryce Preister on May 10th, 2022. So moved. Ann Lyle.
Evening, President and council and staff. Yes, this is in accordance with state statutes, settlement in excess of $50,000 needs to be brought forth for public notification. It's not necessarily an approval thing, doesn't matter if it's approved or not, this is a formal notification for the citizens that this action took place. I would entertain any questions you may have about it.
Lyle, this was 100% covered by alarm, correct?
That's correct. So with work comp claims, there's no out-of-pocket costs, no deductibles per se, when it comes to something like this.
And what will this, will this affect our rates at all in the long run?
I don't know with 100% certainty. I mean, it's reasonable to assume it could. There's some sort of formulation process that goes through for workers' compensation. How that works, I can't explain it, I'm not sure. Other questions or comments? Yes, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions on this topic? There is no action from the council on this. This was just a information-only item. I'll look for a motion for item number 22, consideration of resolution 2025-63 authorizing approval of bylaws for the downtown Norfolk Business Improvement District Board.
I'll make a motion for resolution 2025-63.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ann Mall.
Yes, so this is kind of the last piece of our Business Improvement District. We're required by statute to have a board in place and create some bylaws for the governing of this entity, which ultimately will work as a recommending, recommendation board to this body. The bylaws are attached. I can kind of go through some of the main points of it. Article 2, as required by statute, calls for five board members, one ex officio non-voting member, who will be a member of the Downtown Norfolk Association, and one ex officio non-voting member of the VPD. This is just to ensure that there's clear communication with the different entities that are in downtown and they're working collaboratively. At least four of the voting members must have ties to the Business Improvement District, and then there is the option, although not the requirement, to have one at-large member serve in that capacity if they wanted to. It also requires one voting member to have ties to a nonprofit located within the Business Improvement District, so that has been included in there as well. As far as term limits, it was decided ultimately by the board that they wanted to do a term limit of three years, three terms of three years, so nine consecutive years, and then a board member must sit out one three-year term before they could rejoin. Quarterly meetings for this board are gonna be held in January, April, July, and October. There are attendance requirements for the bid board members, as well as compliance with the Open Meetings Act. It also goes into discussion about officers and their roles, along with cities, what will be the cities' roles and responsibilities. And then the last section references the funding agreement that the city entered into with the Downtown Norfolk Association. It will require one bid board member to be an ex officio member of the Downtown Norfolk Association Board, and requires a separate bid board member to have online read-only access to the DNA's separate bank account that's gonna be associated with the assessment funding, and it'll spell out some duties, including assessing the account once monthly and immediately reporting any suspicious or questionable activity to staff and to the bid board chairperson. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me.
Guys have any questions on that? Anybody in the public have any questions on that board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arnz, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Hildebrand, voting in opposition, Beckman, resolution 2025-63 is adopted.
I'll look for a motion for the consideration of ordinance number 5953, approving a zoning change from R2 to C1 on property addressed as 815 South First Street. This ordinance passed on first reading at the October 2025 city council meeting.
I move consideration board number 5953 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask Val.
And before, yep, and before we get to that, I just wanted to mention that we will have an interpreter potentially here tonight, so all discussion should be mindful of the translator and ensure everyone is speaking one at a time, and there are sufficient pauses so the interpreter can interpret and the applicant can have an opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello to everybody here in the city of Norfolk. Good evening, good night. We've been here a couple times already, I believe. The one that is always here is my mother. I'm her son. We wanted to see the update. We want to make 815 a liquor store, as we had explained in the past, and we're here to see what you guys got to say, you know. Yes, sir.
So this is one where there are three separate readings, so three separate meetings. So this is the second of those meetings, and we're gonna do just that, discuss it a little bit further amongst us, and anybody that may have any questions from the public as well.
Okay. My mother stepped outside, because I believe we were 23 on the list. She stepped outside real quick. I don't know if you guys mind me getting, going to get here real quick, or?
That would be fine.
It's because she thought we had a longer time. I didn't know we were right up, but, you know.
She's just, she's just outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. But yes, I'm a rig welder. I travel a lot for work. I'm a mother-son, and we wanted to proceed with the liquor store, since there's only one liquor store in town. We wanted to make something happen, you know. When you have a business or a building, you just wanna see, you wanna make something out of it, right? So we wanna see if we can proceed with the liquor store and go on from there. You have anything to say?
In Spanish. So the first question is between them, if you want the process to be discussed. The first is only to present their request. We're in the next part, which is when they ask you to explain a little more of your desires, the way you want to maintain your business, and then in the third, they're going to vote. So we're in the next step to see exactly what we're doing.
So I was just translating what Frank was just reiterating about the process of being three separate meetings and the need for, okay, this is just an informative session to get some questions answered. If you guys have concerns, if they have, want to put input into what their business model might be, or things like that, that would need to be presented for your discussion.
And I just need you both to state your names for the record, please.
My name's Alejandro Coher Martinez.
Maria Coellas.
Thank you.
Do you want them to sign in?
Yes.
Ann, if there's a pen and paper there to sign in, please.
Thank you.
Ted, I think it's important to let them know that it did pass on first reading.
And the first one, yes, we were ready to offer their request. And the name of their business.
The name of the business. It still has a name.
Still has a name? What's your name? The way they're representing their case. But the first was, they were in agreement to approve their request.
Okay.
If there are questions, they're going to ask more information.
Okay, is there any questions from you guys about the, about the location?
How long have you, have you owned the property?
How long have we had the location? About 15 years. At first, we ran it when we first bought it, but she had two jobs. She had, she worked at Tyson, and then after work, she'd go and handle the business. It was like a grocery store, and it was too much, where she had too much stress. So we started renting out the building for people to do the same thing, continue as a grocery store. And this year, we just decided to take over, you know, and try to do something different.
Have you had a liquor license before?
No, sir.
Just as a reminder and a little bit of clarification, this is for a zoning change to commercial, so not necessarily any specific commercial, but more general commercial is what we are here about today.
Yes, because they got a grandfather. It's in a residential area, and they got a grandfather, so we could only, right now, we could only do like grocery store, nothing, nothing else besides selling liquor, and that's what we want to do right now.
Does anybody on the council have any questions for applicants?
Since this is the, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Okay, I don't really have a questions for the applicant so much as for Val, because as was noted, this is a zoning change. It isn't a business change. So regardless of what they tell you, what you may say that it's gonna be a liquor store, doesn't really matter. If it fits in the C1 zoning, what are other things that can fit in the C1 zoning, Val?
The decision for today. We're talking about changing the type of the zone. So if we change the type, you have to request your case.
And what is the type of zone that's going to change?
A residency?
A commercial.
A commercial.
Okay.
That allows any type of business.
So some of the items permitted in C1 zoning are office spaces, restaurants, non-drive-through restaurants, food sales such as the grocery store that was already there, retail services. There is a liquor store permitted, but that is just the zone change for C1. The liquor commission for the state would have a separate process for that. So just if the zone change passes, that does not automatically permit a liquor store to take place there.
That's what I.
Because it's part of the state, not part of the city.
And I think that's, that's what's important to be remembered more by this board and by the public, more than anything else, is that the zoning doesn't address a particular type of business. The zoning addresses those that fit into C1 zoning, so.
The request for today is to change the type, so that you can maintain any type of business.
Since this came, since this has come in front of the planning commission and the first reading in front of the council here, has any neighbors or any opposition been to you guys as they don't want the zone change that you're aware of?
No, sir.
Okay.
If there's discussions about the business, other people are against it, they come down.
As far as Maria knows, there's not any communication of a negative, or like, anything against the zoning change? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Now we just need to ask the public if they have.
Yeah, I might ask Val. Val, do you have any additional information you want to kind of share?
We did get one phone call from a neighbor that was not particularly in favor of a liquor store in particular, and we did explain to this neighbor that, just like we went through, that it's the zone change and there is a separate public hearing for a liquor license. So it doesn't automatically provide the liquor store, but a potential. So I don't know if the neighbor came out tonight or not, but we did say it was a second reading, that they could speak to that if they so chose.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this Okay, seeing none. Short title.
An ordinance of the city
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-three carries on second reading.
Seeing no opposition, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass on third.
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass on third reading. Any discussion on that? None? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-three carries on third reading.
Okay, item twenty-four. Offer, we'll look for a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine fifty, creating a paving district number five-two-two, providing for extension of Legacy Drive and extension of North McIntosh Road, all located in the northeast corner, quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-four, north range one, west of the sixth prime meridian in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska. This ordinance passed on first reading at the October sixth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting and on second reading at the October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine fifty.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second, and since this is the third reading, there will be no discussion on the topic. We will just simply ask for a short title.
An ordinance creating paving district number five-twenty-two in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, ordering the construction of public improvements therein and ordering the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty carries on third reading.
Item twenty-five, look for a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-one, creating water extension district number one-thirty-three, which provides for the extension of a water main on Legacy Drive and proposed connection of North McIntosh Road, all located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-four, north range one, west of the sixth prime meridian in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska. This ordinance passed on first reading at the October sixth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting and on second reading at the October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Your honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-one on third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and again, no discussion, but we will ask for that short title.
An ordinance creating water extension district number one-thirty-three in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location and terminal points, referring to the plans, specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-one carries on third reading.
Next, item twenty-six, consideration of ordinance fifty-nine fifty-two, creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-five-nine, which provides for the extension of a sanitary sewer main on Legacy Drive and proposed connection of North McIntosh Road, all located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-four north, range one west of the sixth prime meridian in the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska. This ordinance passed on first reading at the October sixth, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting and on second reading at the October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
Your honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number five-nine five-two on third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, again, no discussion and short title.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district number two-five-nine in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location and terminal points, referring to the plans, specifications and engineer, engineer's estimate in connection therewith, and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-two carries on third reading.
Okay, so item number twenty-seven is on the table. So we have to have a motion to remove that if we want to remove it, is that correct?
Correct. You don't have to.
The question is, do we want to, uh, remove this from the table at this time or do we want a full council on that next, so?
I make a motion, remove it from the table.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to remove it and a second, so we will vote to have it removed from the table.
Voting in the affirmative, Jensen, Webb, Beckman. Voting in opposition, McCarthy, Grandquist, Arns, Langy, Hildebrand. Motion fails.
So item twenty-seven will remain tabled at this time. That does get us to the end of our regular city council meeting for November third. We will follow this up with the, um, public comment opportunities, which are always held on the first regular scheduled meeting of the month. Again, no action can occur at this time. And the comment from, from city council and from staff is limited to nonexistent on the topics that are being brought up because they are not on the agenda.
Not smart enough. My name's David Jansmo. I have a positive comment tonight. I'd like to thank the city law enforcement, the city street department for, uh, putting a speed enforcement, whatever we call it, on Clearfield. It has done a fantastic job. They're no longer doing fifty mile an hour down Clearfield. They're slowing down. It's been there, I think, for a little over a week. It should tell everybody something that there was a problem up there because of the positive aspects it's doing. I still think a little more research needs to be done and following up. I am a firm believer of a stop sign on Dover and Clearfield because of increased traffic and kids and young drivers and everything. But I want to compliment everybody for accomplishing something. And hopefully we'll follow up on it and we won't have any issues. So thank you, the council, law enforcement, city street department. I didn't say my name, right?
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Recently I came across a quote and I think it applies here to this body. Trust takes years to build, seconds to break and forever to repair. It's just an anonymous quote. No one was credited with it, but I think it, it carries a lot of, a lot of weight. I feel we are blessed to live in this country and I believe we have the greatest system of government ever created. Citizen involvement is the cornerstone and you were all chosen by the voters to represent them. In the weak mayor and council system that we have, I believe besides humility, your greatest task is accountability, not only of city staff and of the council itself, but also this very body and the systems you were chosen to serve. You're all gifted with the greatest soapbox in the county, so I would ask that you use it. Give your reasons to your constituents and your fellow council about how and why you're voting the way you are. When you just come up and flip the switch, in my opinion, you are doing your office a great disservice by opening speculation and doubt on your true intentions. Instead of building trust and stability, you open Pandora's box with the unknown. Explain your position, explain your vote. Do not chastise or degrade another by questioning their position. Sell yours. Their vote is no less important. I have personally witnessed attacks from councilmen towards other council members and it's not a good fit. My other concern is when citizens enter your chambers as guests, they should be treated as such. Proper decorum should be maintained, staying on top, topic and personal attacks should not be an option. I have witnessed personal attacks towards guests, which should never happen as chosen leaders. When city staff or consultants hired by this body attack citizens speaking on topic, this simply is not acceptable. What you permit, you promote. Allowing these attacks and by not explaining your reasoning and your decision only perpetuates a climate of distrust. It also promotes a lack of openness that does not shed a good light on this body, leaving open sores that may never heal. The recent decision to end recording of subcommittee meetings and how it was handled was a huge blow to public trust. I believe it was driven more by citizens' public records requests that help nurture accountability and trust rather than the reason given of protecting meeting participants. Those same recordings could be utilized by any of you when you are not allowed to participate in the subcommittee because of quorum issues. Government should be public at all costs and you should be leading the charge. And lastly, I want to thank you for doing the public comment period once a month. I think that's a great tool for you guys and for the citizens to create this openness. So thank you.
Dale, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Dale Coy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim McKenzie. At the October sixth city council meeting, it was mentioned by your outside attorney that the only reason for recording subcommittee meetings was to assist the city clerk with drafting minutes. That statement was completely false. I recently spoke to the former city administrator who was here when the policy to record subcommittee meetings was started and asked him why the policy was put in place. He stated, and I quote, "The policy was implemented to keep us all accountable. It was started to keep the staff and the elected officials accountable to the citizens," unquote. He further stated that it was to prevent good old boyism and to prevent little graphs from becoming big graphs. He also said the public has the right to know everything that goes into formulating a proposal that comes before the public on an agenda item. That is not happening today and evidently this council doesn't feel the public has that right. You took that right away in a closed-door meeting without so much as a vote. You do not allow the public to attend subcommittee meetings where you are formulating policy and now the public is not even allowed to listen to a recording. You have undone a forty-five-year-old longstanding policy to hold staff and elected officials accountable to the public. There used to be public subcommittee meetings of the whole body called finance committee meetings, but no more. All subcommittee meeting discussions are now held in secret. Somehow sadly, we have lost our way as a community. At last month's meeting, I heard justification for this change from some of you, such as people don't feel comfortable talking if they know they're being recorded or some things are private. First of all, I want to remind you that you are all public officials and it is the duty of an elected public official to conduct the public's business in front of the citizens. And perhaps, then perhaps, if you said, if you can't feel, don't feel comfortable saying something about the public's business, business in front of the citizens, then perhaps it shouldn't be said at all. You are accountable for your statements and your actions. Second of all, if there's something like a sensitive family financial issue, as was mentioned as a reason to stop recording, you have the option to go into closed session for that specific purpose. But that is not the route you have chosen. You have chosen instead to stop any and all public access to your subcommitting, meeting discussions and deliberations. The first sentence of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act says, "It is hereby declared to be the policy of this state that the formation of public policy is public business and may not be conducted in secret." You can hide behind the claim that a subcommittee is not subject to the Open Meetings Act, but the act itself does not say that. That's a legalistic interpretation. And in some cases, case law does not support that. Certainly, that is not the intent of the Open Meetings Act. Values come from the top. An organization's core principles, priorities and ethical standards are established and modeled by its leadership. Integrity is what you do behind closed doors when nobody's watching or in our case even just listening. You have chosen to shut the public out of the vast majority of your policy deliberations and now stop them from even hearing what was said. Are those your values? Are those the values you hold up as representing the city of Norfolk? Is this how you really want to conduct your public business? I ask for better for our community. Just do what is right and open all subcommittee meetings to the public. Let the public listen to and have input on policy discussions and deliberations. Hold yourself accountable to the public. Prevent corruption and good old boyism. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make any comments?
Uh, my, my name's Paul Medelman. I hadn't planned on making any comments, but, uh, in listening to Mr. McKenzie, according to him at a committee meeting, it's illegal for me to talk to anyone of my councilman. And I don't understand that. I was told that by McKenzie and by Shukai, that that's illegal to talk to a councilman about a project.
I object. You're not allowed to attack an individual in this meeting. I have a comment for you.
Please, please refrain from doing that.
Very well. Uh, at any rate, I was, uh, told that I could not talk to councilmen at that meeting, so everybody knows who that was, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make any comments tonight in the open public? If not?
I do have, are you going to adjourn the meeting after this?
I was, yes.
I just want to comment that on the October sixth meeting, that Councilman Langy, did not vote. He abstained from the vote on tabling that item and today he voted.
Did he abstain from voting on the item or the tabling of the item? He abstained from the tabling of the item?
No, I didn't. I was, I was out in the audience at the time and.
Because I think he removed himself from the actual item itself. Because I think he removed himself from the actual item itself.
Just coming from the meeting notes, it's showing that he abstained. Absent, Langy, absent.
Absent. It showed us absent, not abstaining.
That's why you were abstaining. I think that you said you were gonna abstain. You didn't agree with abstaining, so you left the audience. Just want to note that.
Yeah, I think that when he abstained, it was from the item on the agenda.
Was that it?
And then that's when he removed himself. But then when the table was the second motion that came up, he was not up here.
I just want to mention that.
Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, in the audience at the time.
Any other comments during the open section? If not, this meeting's adjourned.